Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday October 4th, City of New Franklin Council meeting. We have no first readings, no second readings, no third readings, and no pending amendments.
One third.
One third, I'm sorry. Thank you. I do have one more thing. Okay. I'm just training you. Thank you. We have one third reading. Ordinance number 23-0-01 as amended. And that is Mr. Webb. So I'm assuming, do you want to go, Mr. Cox?
Sure. So we will open the laws and ordinance meeting, or committee meeting at 6:03 with two of us here. And I believe we are just going to ask for time on this because we weren't able, our consultant has been out of town. And so we haven't been able to do anything additional at this point.
Yeah, that's correct. We've communicated, he was out of country. And we've communicated the specific changes that we suggested. And he's got the master, he's going to incorporate those and be with us probably sometime next week. I think he gets back beginning of next week. And then we'll make that amended version available immediately. The council will post it so people can take a look at it. This one we could, certainly should be able to do a red line version, showing where the changes are. So we should be on schedule for that for council's consideration on the 18th.
And I'd really like, not only go on the full four, full three reading, but go on the four three, show the community that we're not, there's nothing to be enforced on any of this. We're giving plenty of time.
Eric.
Hi. I sent an email to everyone on council with some concerns I have on zoning, the zoning code. And print out a copy for me for tonight, sorry. But if anybody got that, is there going to be any opportunity for changes or suggested amendments to be discussed? I don't believe it's anywhere out on the city's website, the current version. So, you know, it's kind of hard to have people put input.
Are you talking about the first three articles?
Correct.
You're on that commission?
I'm on planning and zoning.
Right. You sat in on those meetings?
Yes.
And you had input to the board at that time? Okay. And the board listened to what you had to say?
They did.
Okay.
There was one change that was made, but the wording was different. So I sent what I suggested and what the wording ended up being to council. There was one in between our seeing it, that planning and zoning, and it going to council, character and character draft was deleted. I don't know how. And there were a couple of other things. And in reading through our old zoning code, our current zoning code and the new stuff, I just kind of picked up on a few things I had concerns about.
So you have a couple that you mentioned, then you have a couple additional ones that you didn't bring to the full commission's attention while you were in the commission meeting?
Correct. I think you just kind of get the process of that. And so it's taking a while. I did have to speed on everything.
Would your in time, Paul, that she could discuss that or get input from the residents?
Oh, sure. Well, that's what the public hearing was for.
So you both had a chance. That's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, we publicized that. And we're on the four three, or the third reading. I don't mean to be argumentative, I just, you know, if you're part of the commission, we would expect those things to be discussed in the commission. And then once the commission recommends, you know, the changes to council, that's generally, a commission speaks as a whole. And I don't mean to quell any of your comments, you know, but I just suggest to you how I think, how a commission would normally work.
And I'm not speaking as somebody on the commission, I'm speaking as a private citizen and things that I saw.
And we did get them.
We did get them and we did read them.
I did not, so I shouldn't.
I'll send you a copy. But I think what Terry means is other people in the community, well, they have a chance, if they do have concerns, to voice those at that meeting. And I don't mean stand up and give a big to-do. But can they mention if they have certain ideas? Or would they be better off emailing someone?
Well, again, I'm not the gatekeeper on it, but I'm certainly willing to try to channel those things out to, you know, to funnel them out to council as they are presented. I will make sure that we get a copy of it on the website. I thought it was, but I didn't check to see if it was. And then whatever these suggested changes are, we'll get those out as well. And then, I guess it'll be, it'll be council's decision to decide whether or not to incorporate any of the other changes that Ms. Precise is suggesting, because it won't go back to.
It won't go back.
Right. It won't go back to planning and zoning.
So Terry, when that red line comes out, I'll make sure to email it to you. So you have it, you can review it and see if any of your changes are already in there, or if you still have concerns with some of the things. But we'll take the time to discuss those also during. As Mr. Daniels said, we're moving on to our fourth reading. And we're not, we're not limited to the number of readings that we can do on something like this. And as you mentioned about public input.
Yes.
Each council meeting, people have the opportunity to come and speak about it. The next Planning and Zoning Commission workshop for this is on the 19th, October 19th. At 6:30. Right. So that's an opportunity for possibly to give input. It's a workshop for the committee and they'll be working. So there won't be a structured public input thing, but usually at those meetings, they provide time at the end of the meeting for citizens to share their thoughts or their concerns. So you can't just, you know, raise your hand in the middle of it and say, hey, but at the end of it, you can take the time to give your thoughts and concerns.
And there's going to be to get more people involved in this meeting.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to comment too. We've talked about this for months, we're on the third reading and we have not had input in our meetings, you know, so that's telling me, that's either telling me people are uninterested or I'm not sure what it's telling me, but people are not here, even though we've talked about it at length. And this is our third, and we're going to our fourth reading. So we have not had, I have not had, besides Terry's, no other emails with concerns about it, so.
Right. And there's been, as Terry mentioned, there's been quite a few people at these, at the workshops. But I agree with you and I agree with Mr. Adamson is that if you have a concern, you should be here. But also, you're, you know, you discuss this and work with it within your committee. And, you know, you should have been able to resolve things within your committee before it came, came to council. So I guess one question would be, does the committee need to go over this, you know, say, you know, we don't want to turn that in and start over? Or, you know, I don't know. We'll get the red line, we'll see the changes, we'll see what concerns you still have. But I think moving forward, we'd really like to see the committee be, as a whole, on the record.
I think the 19th, I don't think that's a workshop, I thought that was a public hearing.
No.
No, it's a workshop. Your public hearing is next weekend, or next Tuesday, I believe.
The 10th, you know, so the 10th is the work, or the public hearing for the behind dollar general. The 19th should be the public hearing for the next.
The 19th is a workshop on Articles 4, 5, 6, and 7.
So what?
So that's a workshop, and then after that workshop, planning and zoning will decide whether they need another workshop on those articles, because, and they may, because now you're getting into some, you know, more complexity. Article 1, 2, and 3 are really framework articles. There's not a lot of contentious content in there. The changes that have been suggested, the only, I think, the only ones that were substantive was changing the notice from, what, seven days to 10, or 10 to 14?
14.
Yeah, 10 to 14. So I haven't seen what else is suggested. If they're, if they're not, if they're substantial, then I suppose there could be some consideration as to whether or not it needs to go back. If it's something the council feels they can deal with, and I'm guessing it probably will be, it's hard for me to imagine if there's anything of heavy substance that wasn't already in those, Article 1, 2, and 3. But, so the workshop will be on 4, 5, 6, and 7 on the 19th. And then they'll proceed at a date, certain date in the future for them?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're looking at this next workshop is minor tweaks to 4, 5, and 6, not substantive changes, changing the type of housing stock and districts and stuff like that. Is that supposed to be done in phase two?
Yeah, no, I get it. Well, and first of all, again, it's not my baby.
Right, but I'm sure it's on the same page.
What we've seen initially, well, we'll wait till the, did you get an initial draft? I think the initial.
Yeah, I haven't seen any. That's why I'm asking. You know, I know, at least I don't have the impression that this is just tweaking the stuff that we're seeing on the verances on and stuff like, you know, setbacks and stuff. Cleaning it up, organizing it.
That's my understanding.
Not changing the intent or context of those articles.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And this meeting would be the meeting if people are concerned to come to, because in the end, we're voting on that.
Right.
You know, so if they have concerns, forget it to me. I'm not going to have my mind chained on it by, you know, I'm not being personal, but just, you know, the concerns here. We have, you know, five, six, seven people out here showing concern. So if you have some people, have them please come and show their concerns to us, because like I said, we're going to be, we have the last say on it, I have to say. All right, thank you.
And a couple of other things, real quick. Quite a few of what Terry has put in her email is, a lot has to do with wording and whether things are worded consistently throughout. Not necessarily changing things, just noticing something consistent with some wording and stuff. I would ask that you forward this on to Barry.
Okay.
So he can forward on the thread. And so he can review that also and see if he needs to go through and make some of those, those tweaks.
Yeah, and I agree there. Some of them are small, but when it says does, and it should say does not, that completely changes the meaning of sentence.
Well, sure. And this will give them the opportunity to review that and make those changes. And then you'll be able to look at it when we get that red line copy and see what we're after things. Eric. So, did you guys say vote on it? Oh, Tom. So, well, I'm sure.
And I'll reiterate what Dave said, I thought that was fantastic. Bring people, if people have concerns about it. That's why we're doing it.
Oh, we will close the laws and ordinance committee at 6:14.
Does anyone else have anything this time?
There's a bridge coming, it looks like there's a foot on.
It's moving along.
Yeah. Those bridges.
Oh, yeah, because I haven't gone the other way.
So we're still hoping for him.
We're waiting out in the area.
That is excellent. That is really great.
Yeah.
Nothing else?
The committee's got it.
So I'd like to call to order this City of New Franklin council meeting from Wednesday, October 4th at 6:15. Everyone rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The two to the left.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Sock?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of September 20th.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Phil.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Does anyone in the public have a comment that they'd like to make at this time? Anybody does anything they want to talk about? No? Then we only have one third reading, and I will turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Ms. Keppler.
Oh, sorry. It's okay.
Ordinance number 23-0-01, and ordinance to amend Articles 1, 2, and 3 of the New Franklin zoning code.
Okay. This resolution is signed to the laws and ordinance, and we're going to ask for time on ordinance 23-0-01 as amended.
Thank you. We have asked time as asked for, so time is granted. I do have to say something though, and I'm just going to say what happened again.
Yep.
We have two agendas. So I missed making the motion to approve the financials for September 23, subject to audit.
On the first one and not on the second.
And I switched with him because he had the third reading and I didn't have.
We don't do that to the second meeting, I don't know.
Okay. That's not fine. So her version is the correct version?
Yes. That's the second meeting.
Okay, we're good. Okay, we're good.
Right.
So now we're coming to our favorite part of the meeting. It's yours, Paul.
And I just hope it's always there.
Always, always.
Okay, well, let me see. First of all, something really positive. This was presented to us by the 83 Navy Ride Across America team in appreciation for your support. And, hang on, this is some type of prom in place. Pass that along. Let's see. It was an afternoon event, or a lunchtime event. I know everybody wasn't available. We were grateful to have Mrs. Jones and Mr. Daniels with us to greet these folks. And again, this was the Naval Academy class of 83 who decided to do a ride across America, 3,500 miles, from Puget Sound to Annapolis.
Bicycles, not motor.
Bicycles. And I mentioned, I didn't do the math on this thing until like two days before the event and realized that these guys are all in their 60s doing this. And they gave a real nice presentation. They mentioned that this started with their, let's see, their 35th reunion, because this would be 40 years. And at the 35th reunion, they decided they were trying something like this. And they said that we made that decision late in the evening and there was alcohol involved. And so then they trained, they broke up the trail and over the next five years, and did segments of it. And they're now very close to finishing. And I'll try to paraphrase this, this was a post that they put on on September 28th, the day that they came to the Tudor House. Today, we rode 64 miles from Oberlin to Canton. We climbed 2,700 feet. We are not a learning organization evidently. We looked at the mileage and elevation and thought this was going to be a recovery day. No, it wasn't. They ran into some rain, they ran into some inclement weather. And they say that we've dealt with rain before. As one of our teammates like to say, on, on, we continued with rain gear pressed on. The highlight of the day happened in New Franklin. We received an invitation to lunch at the Tudor House, and we got to about one mile away, a police car pulled into our path and escorted us to the location. As we rode in, the driveway was lined with people waving small American flags and clapping for us. Hard to comprehend. We had a very nice welcome speech from the mayor, and then a hearty lunch and a waterfront pavilion. We'll never get used to this kind of generosity. It will always overwhelm us. Thank you, New Franklin. Yeah. Yeah, it's really, wasn't it?
Yeah, sure.
Great event. And talking to these guys, three admirals in the bunch. And the one fellow I talked to, I said, what would you do in the service? He was a submarine commander. We talked to one of the other gentlemen, 39 years, just had retired. And I said, well, he said, well, I was a destroyer captain. And then I was a base commander. And then I was the base commander for North America. And by the end, I was a base commander for the Navy. The Admiral and his command. So, anyway, that was a beautiful thing.
Well, may I add one?
Please.
They had, on each one of their cards, they have several opportunities that we can make donations to. There's a lot of them, church and, what's that called?
Americans.
Americans. And they had, what were the different, Salvation Army? They had so many, they had on their cards.
One of your words, I think it's one of them too.
Yes, and you can actually go online and donate and use their name, and it'll go toward this money that they're earning on this trip.
If you go, if you Google, just Google Navy Ride Across America, you'll find the site, and then you can find the various.
And they were very close to the money that they wanted to get.
Yeah, they mentioned they were trying to raise 250,000, and they were close to 500,000.
Yeah.
So it was just a heartwarming thing, was it? And they felt the same way. So, all right. Let's see. As you are aware, the COVID vaxes are available. The new COVID vax is available out at Summit County Public Health. You can make appointments by going to Summit County Public Health. If you go to their website and you follow the prompts, you can click online to schedule an appointment. There's also walk-in days on Tuesdays with no appointment. And the hours are from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. So if you want that newest booster, you can contact Summit County Public Health, and they will give it to you. Although the supplies are, it sounds like a commercial. The supplies are limited, but they are now, so far. They're coming in kind of slow, they said, but they'll be here. Our budget meetings will be Wednesday, October 11th. 9 o'clock fire, 10 o'clock police, 11 o'clock service. So anybody from council that's able to attend, please feel free. And you already mentioned South Main Street Bridge is moving along. Just continue to hope for the best there. Oktoberfest will be a week from Sunday. Be October 15th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. And plenty to do. Free admission, all the beverages you'd expect, German food. We got the German family dancers. We'll have some inflatables, we'll have hay rides. So we'll have a lot of fun. So come out to the Oktoberfest, noon to 6, on Sunday the 15th. The Portage Lakes will be lowered following day. It's just a coincidence, it's not because of the Oktoberfest. Yeah, so they'll start lowering the lakes, it takes seven days. That's Monday, October 16th. I think they said they're going down, I gotta notice. I think they're going down 15.
15, or getting it to.
Yeah, yeah. And it will stay down until November 27th, and then they'll start raising it again. So there'll be almost a month and, well, almost a month and a half there for dock repairs and those types of things. Just wait along the shore and see what kind of stuff fell in the water. I always used to like to do that. Okay. We, something came in like real quick this week, an opportunity to apply for a federal grant, the Water Resource Development Act, W R D A. And grants for that are confined to navigation and, but also flood prevention. And so it's sort of limited, it was a third topic. I think what, it's not water quality in the sense of wastewater, but algae and those types of things. So we got a notice, I think all this happened yesterday, actually, that the deadline was tomorrow. But fortunately, we already had some paperwork put together. And so we, I sent in the preliminary information for the grant. This is in a federal appropriation. And so there's no indication of any matching or anything like that that would require a resolution to ask for those funds. But we got a pretty decent project, and it's the South Main Street Storm Sewers. And some of you have been here when we've talked about that before. I won't go into a lot of detail. The storm sewer runs from, basically from Caspen to about Demosilla. And it was installed in the late 1930s as part of the reservoir project. And it is not in invested condition, let's just say that. So we have studies going back 2011, 2015, that have suggested replacing that. And that hasn't happened yet. We, Faco, you and I are familiar with this, you know, with the situation over there. So I'm comfortable with it. But anyway, I, fortunately, we had a lot of the narrative, et cetera, from our previous requests, so I was able to plug that in and got that sent in yesterday. It'll be a few months, but we'll find out. We'll see if anyone gets some funding for that, so we're going to try. We are awaiting word from OPWC as far as Vanderhoof. And they're going to shake the variety of bushes that we've talked about before. The Ohio Builds Fund through the Department of Development, capital grants that will be available after the first of the year. So we'll keep, we'll keep tracing that, we'll keep your advice. There were changes, the Ohio Legislature, House Bill 33, made several changes to Ohio Municipal Income Tax. And we have to then, as does everybody else, amend our tax ordinance to conform with Ohio law. I mentioned that to you a month or two ago. They didn't have the model language at that time. They do now, just got it today. So we'll make those amendments, we really have no discretion. It's just a matter of making sure that our code conforms with Ohio law. And we'll try to get some summaries of what they are. Some of these are not too substantive, some of them are a little bit confusing. But in any event, we'll, I plan to have that for you at the next meeting. And we have to get something passed by the end of the year, so we've got some time on this. All right, let's see. And AMAT's annual meeting on Friday, and I'm going to be there, reminding them that we want that planning grant for State Route 619. So we're continuing to ring all the bells and let them know we're out here. Put their hands up. And I think that's. Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Apple Creek Bank has an open house on Friday, from 11 to 2. So, and we went last year, and they have delicious pulled pork and pulled chicken. They have some drawings that they're going to have. But really, more importantly is to get in there and meet those folks again. And we wrote it, I wrote about it this week. So we'd like to get, you know, we certainly want to support them. They've been a really good neighbor. And we want to support them every way we can. I think that's all I got.
Paul, something they are doing at Apple Creek? They're sponsoring for the schoolchildren. If they come, if they fall within a certain grade range, they're doing like little bonus things and asking people if they'd like to be sponsors or donate money or something, even from their company to promote this. So children get a little gift if they reach a certain grade level for a certain period of time. I think that's a good thing too. And that's Apple Creek, that's where they're.
I'll try to get some information on that and put it on our website.
Thank you. Do we have anything on the confidence of the county?
Yes. So we made some very nice progress, and I'm frustrated at how my email works. Once I accepted that I'm going to go to the event, everything goes into my calendar, so it's a little hard for me to find all these. But I think I got them. So there's going to be a public meeting at Gather at the Lakes on November 6th, I believe, at 7:00 p.m. Yes, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And what that is going to be is the public release of the comprehensive plan report. We've had a nice amount, a fair amount of discussion. You know, unfortunately, our last meeting was via Zoom, and only, I think, five people showed up. I can't remember how many were on there, but it was almost as many of the leaders there as there were members. But then we pushed a little bit for some email dialogue to get the people that were at the meeting to give us some feedback on what their thoughts were on it. And we got some good feedback. It helped to give confidence that there wasn't anybody on the committee that had a major problem with any, any of the part of the document. So the final comprehensive plan will be released on November 6th at Gather at the Lakes. And then the following, if this one didn't come in, it's in the email, but it didn't come into my calendar, I believe the following city council meeting will be about the 15th or so, November, yes, November 15th. So at that meeting, the plan is for the committee to be here and do the public release to council, essentially, at the council meeting on 15th. And, you know, I can't recall whether we adopted that, well, we were a township, I don't know what we did in 2004, but I, I'll have to look as to whether or not we wanna, you know, whether that, we want formal adoption by resolution approval by council of that document. I would, I would suppo, I'll look at that.
I would think there's something that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not a binding document, it's an advisory document, so it's important in that sense. Maybe it just be a voice for, I'll check on that.
One thing I, I will say, this, this came up in a number of discussions throughout the whole process, this is not a list of things that will be done. When you look at this, there's a lot of stuff in this document, and it's, it's ideas, it's a, it's an advisory document, and it's a, you know, okay, if you're gonna, if, if we're gonna have some changes happen in this part of town, here's some ideas as to how to do it so that it conforms with, with the wishes of the community, and it's kind of consistent so that we're not doing one thing on this side of town and something else on that side of town. So, so when you see it, don't think this is just a big giant list of, we'll have all this stuff done in five years because we're not millionaires. It's just, just a, a document.
Would it be possible to get that sent out to council, week or seven for the?
Absolutely.
That way we can review it?
Absolutely. I personally don't see why it couldn't be sent out to council now.
So earlier than better.
You know, there's not, there's not really any position, we're not in any position to make changes to it at this point. We've pretty well had all the meetings, so I guess now it probably wouldn't be the time to get distributed to council. So I don't see any reason that I can't get that out of the base. I'll follow up on that, too, then. Okay. I mean, it's.
It's transparent.
I think we should be, you know, should be, I don't really know, I, I have not been in those discussions. So I think, well, I might as well let people see it before then, but then, or is, does that kind of take some of the steam out of November 6th while we're unveiling it, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I think it'd be good for us to be able to review and digest it, and if we had questions, we're prepared for that at the meeting.
I do have to say that we had some, some edits there. I don't believe the absolute final document is done, so it's not polished. There's formatting issues, what we had with the Word document, and it, like I said, the things weren't quite jived, so it's not quite ready for the public, but I, I don't see any reason that it couldn't be released.
I haven't seen it, I'll take a look, assuming it's readable. You guys have.
It's, it's readable, but it just doesn't.
Okay.
Quite jive.
Okay. I'll find out, okay. I'll see where they are, and if they're a day or two away from making it readable, I'll wait then. If there's, it's gonna be a week, or there's something, I'm not good at it, I'll see soon. Or feel free to share it with us.
I think it'd be best for us to wait for the, for a final, final. And ideally, we could still get that before the public release, before council. But instead of, like you said, it's not, you know.
Yeah.
Polish. Polish. Let's, let's wait, I think. Let's wait until it is done, and then that way we can see what it is, you know, exactly what it is and what's gonna be presented.
I believe we're very close.
Yeah, it sounds like we are.
I'll, I'll, I'll initiate some dialogue between Mike and Warren. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Susan?
Well, as some of you know, we're about finished up with the audit, it'll be official probably next week, and then that, after that, and once the auditors did a, a sign off on it, it'll be on the website, and we're just like, all the audits are everywhere, and be available for viewing. We had something in the arrangement letter, as you do know, but that's not, that's not on your audit, that's not, those are just things that they want you to clear up and do better on, and so it was actually, came out really well, so we're happy with that. We keep working on it, we keep trying to keep it, keep everything in, in line and do everything we're supposed to do. That will be official, and people can get it at the auditor states off, online at their website. Mayor took part, my thunder about the budget meetings on October 11th, but just to review, just review how the process goes, I know that Ken and Jack are used to it, they were there last time, but basically what happens is, we have a, a meeting for each department, that department brings their draft budget in, we go line by line with them through that, and, and included in that discussion has to do with a lot of their capital projects or capital expenditures. And we go through all that and decide, and basically finalize it, I bring in some of the numbers, for example, like from insurance and things that they don't know about, but then that all gets put together after that meeting with each department in a draft form, they all see it again and review it again, at least once, sometimes twice, and then let me know if there's anything that, oh, by the way, I thought about this and I need to tweak that, or what have you. But the majority, the bulk of the discussion is on that first meeting, where, okay, what are you looking towards this next year? As, as you know, you sat in there, and, and, and so unlike some people who thought for, that I made up all the budgets, I don't do that, I do it, and I help them with the part that's mine, and we get it all put together, and it comes to you, and you should have it about the first week in November, so you should have plenty of time to look it over and discuss it, ask questions, or what have, what have you. So that's, that's our focus, for, one of our focuses for right now. One other thing is, two of the representatives of NOPEC came to see me this week, because usually I, I'm part of person, well, I'm the person that handles some, like our Sheringate grants and those kinds of things, and getting the paperwork back and getting us reimbursed. They have a new program that's coming out for small businesses, basically auditing them for, you know, saving money on their, at their business for fighting or what have you, and doing an audit of that. And also they're establishing some preferred auditors list, and also ways of, some loans that are available through NOPEC, as a part of NOPEC, and their grant, to help these small businesses to fix whatever might be in the audit that they need to update. So they're supposed to contact me because they would like to come to maybe the next meeting or the one after that, they've got to throw the schedules, and explain that so that people will know. But there are, there are these, these grants and audits available for small businesses in New Franklin. So I did wanna kind of let you know and, and alert you to the fact that we're trying to get them to give us the lowdown, come and give us the lowdown so that everybody knows. That's all I have.
That's interesting, Susan, and I thought the audit went very well.
Thanks, I really do.
Do we have any old business?
This is old, it's pretty old, it's got to do with the Congo Road Bridge, which is as old as old gets, I think, when it comes to government policy. So they're working on it, and I had a conservative resident come up to me asking for a little added lease protection for speeders once it's open, be all nice and new, and he said the, you know, the stop sign, the four-way stop would be a help, but he called that the launching pad, so that they take off from there, so. Hey, I thought that was a valid message, thing, you know, road has been closed now.
And we did get those four ways up.
Yes, definitely. And then another thing is our primary election, and the cost that that's gonna cause us because we have a primary that we don't use, we've never used, we've never had a primary. I would really like to see us move forward with legislation to eliminate the primary from our charter. We've talked a little bit, don't know, somebody, I don't even remember who it was, told me that we could, as council, propose that and pass that and change the charter without the commission, but I don't know that for sure. So now we have to wait and go through it, go ahead.
Because I thought the charter had to be voted on.
Yeah. That's true. Oh, we have to, we could vote to get it on the ballot.
Exactly.
Not, not, I said that wrong. We could vote to get it on the ballot without a charter review. If I follow this right, charter review's job is to bring that to council, then council makes a vote to put it on the ballot.
Right.
So, I mean, and I don't know, it would be a year from now, because it was the, well, the March, because the presidential election primaries in Ohio were in March, just, so we could end up with something on the ballot in March if we don't act before that.
Possible. The Charter Review Commission will be up next year.
Right.
So after the first of the year, we're gonna need to appoint that commission. That, it's a matter that they could take up, and then would, if they make any recommendations for charter amendments, that would be on the November ballot. So to try to get one in anticipation of that, that's not impossible. The, so I guess it'd just be a question of timing, trying to determine, you know, if it could get on prior to, well.
It'd have to be, it'd have to be on the March ballot.
Here's the problem, well, if you eliminate primaries altogether, it's gonna change the, it's gonna change the date for petitions.
Correct.
And if there was no September primary, if there was no primary at all, then I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the date would be. The county wanted everybody to move to the main primary, and a number of cities did and we didn't. And had we, those petitions had to be filed in January. So if we eliminate the petition, if we eliminate the, I don't know when the, I don't know when the petitions would have to be filed, but if it's conceivable that somehow by eliminating the primary, petitions would have to be filed in January, then it wouldn't do any good to have it on the ballot in March. Well, it'd be prospective, you know, at that point, you know, so anyway.
I think, I think a lot of communities have eliminated that to where their petitions for, say, a council seat is due, I think, August or September.
Ours are really early.
Ours are June because of the day of the primary, but the other communities.
So it's late a little later.
Yeah, so there's a lot of places that are, that just recently, you know, in the last month filed a run for council.
Right.
For this coming election.
The, the question I would have about trying to push this through for the primary election is, since we don't have primaries, would, would there be a cost to us to add that to the election?
It shouldn't be, because it's a presidential year. So there will be, are, where the cost, I mean, you could explain a little bit.
No, what I'm realizing now is that there's no municipal election next year anyway.
Correct.
Very true. So, so we're talking about, you know, this'll impact 2025, not 2020.
So the municipal election, the, the risk is what just happened to us, where we have somebody, a business owner, put something out.
That exists.
We didn't have faith of, that's what we need to prevent.
Yeah.
Because that cost is gonna be significant. Have we seen that cost yet?
No, you have not, and we're gonna be talking about it if and when we get a bill.
Yeah.
Because we didn't get any advance notice about this. I'm not sure we had any discretion.
I don't think we did either, but we're, we're the ones that designated the right, that that was a primary date, so the date that the petition was.
I haven't looked at it at all, whether or not they even, whether it was appropriate to put it on when they did, you know.
Do you have, like, just a rough, rough number as to what? Because I've heard some rough numbers for different primaries.
I've had no communication from them at all about that primary. With the exception, they came in and, somebody came in and put a, a notice up on the board, and didn't talk to admin, looked at the zoning window and said, here, we gotta put, put this up, okay. That's it.
Yeah. I, I am 100% in favor of, favor of the primaries. We've never, like you said, we've never had a need for a primary, and we talked about this five years ago, and the Charter Review Commission, that I've decided not to do anything. But I think this is something for the Charter Review Commission, as council, we are allowed to voice concerns with the Charter, or the Charter Review Commission to, to discuss, and so we can have that as part of our list of things that we'd like to have them look at in the Charter. And again, this is not a, an election year for us.
But the problem is, it could end up costing us another, I mean, they asked us, I heard $30,000 to $50,000.
$30,000 to $20,000.
$20,000 to $30,000, so it, 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 well, I, I don't have a full understanding. I, I think we're on the same page.
Right.
I think we agree with it.
They had some additional conversations.
Yeah. And probably some council advice, as to what's, that's all the open.
And if you do want me to look into some of this, I can, because one thing you don't know is, or you may not know, that we won't get a bill for it, it'll just be deducted from our tax, taxes that they, they.
Oh, the Board of Elections has that authority?
Yeah, we have an election expense line, when they give us our property taxes, whatever the election expenses, it's taken out.
So it comes out of our, while you're receiving.
But we won't, we won't have.
Yeah, it comes out of our tax, property tax, I mean, under your seat, but we won't get a bill that says, hey, this was this specific cost.
We won't have an appropriation for it, it's just gonna come out of them.
Right, right.
Do they give you, Susan, how they decide on the amount?
No, no, without asking, you know, you'd have to dig deeper to find it, because that just isn't a number, like a lot of their other deductions.
That's what it sounded like, Susan, I guess, so you really don't get anything to base it on unless you ask.
Right.
Yeah, we do want you to follow on that.
Okay.
And see if they're intending to try to bill us for this.
Okay.
About what it would be.
To fight early.
And how they decide.
Normally, I don't like to, you know, bring the bill if, but since they can just done this. And the, I think you have already alluded to this, but amendments, according to our charter, amendments by affirmative vote of two-thirds of council, council can submit a proposed amendment to the charter. There's also a citizens initiative, that 5% of the electors that voted in the last general election can also propose an amendment to the charter. And then third way is through the charter commission themselves. So if there's, my point is, if there's a financial reason that we should, you know, we'd do it quicker, we need to save.
I was in favor of it last time, right?
Yeah.
For money. Although it was a different issue. We were talking about moving it, we weren't talking about eliminating it, we were talking about moving it today.
Well, I suggest eliminating it, counting the same amount, to move it.
You think you did, and it's not.
I brought it up and brought information, why we should get rid of it.
You did.
And so when the Charter Review Commission was talking about, they looked at, they would loan, move it to me, or get rid of it, and they just, they just did nothing with it.
I don't know if they had a reason for that or not, do you do remember?
I think it was, it's just new to them at the time, and they're, you know.
And maybe they weren't thinking cost-wise.
Right.
Because I don't think that most people really think about how costly an election can be.
Yeah.
Do we have any, is that a little old business, John? Do we have any new business?
I just got something, I noticed some chatter on it over the weekend, as about our tax rates and how we're taxed higher than any other community in the area, and build on some of that stuff. So I, I gave them a homework, dug into some of the other communities around here, so what they're paying for taxes. This is based on the property taxes that we're paying. And, you know, basically, it's based on millage, and Susan correctly gone wrong, but millage is basically, whatever that millage number is, you take that as a dollar amount times the thousand, you know, they break it down into $1,000, so the county's millage rate is 12.157 mils, so that's for every $1,000 of value your house is assessed, not appraised. So the, the assessed value is 35% of the appraised value. And for every $1,000 they have charged, you $12.157. And based off of some of these numbers, New Franklin's millage rate, if you can find this here, is 8.726. Coventry, the township's millage rate is actually 20.085. Morton's is 9.833, and Green, they've got a much lower millage rate, but they've also got a ton of industry business and stuff like that, which helps to drive that millage rate down. And our 8.726, that's also the police and fire levies and stuff there, correct?
Yes, well, it's, exactly.
That's an all the millage for New Franklin.
That, well, our actual, our actual millage is like 12.15, I think, 12.15.
Effective.
As far as, as far as if you look on each school district, because it's broken up by school districts, because everything's different, yeah, our rate is always the same, because that's based, as you said, on the levies, our inside millage and our outside millage, which is the levies. So what goes to the service department, for streets, and what goes to general fund, as well as any levies.
So where the real difference starts coming into play, as you kind of touched on, is the school districts. So Coventry School District, which I live in, their millage rate is 39.12%. Morton's is 29.518. Northwest is 28.5, and Manchester is 44.117. So just to base this off of a $200,000 house in Coventry, out of, I'll call it $4,020 it's paid on an annual basis in property tax, only $576 of that come to the actual city of New Franklin. And 2360 goes to the Coventry School District. And then you've got the Summit County, who has the 12.15, and they're getting $746, and then you've got the Joint Vocational School, which is now the Career Center, they're getting 120, Summit County Libraries is getting 100, and then Metro Parks is getting 100. For similar property in New Franklin, has a little less on the, the value of the house, but out of $3,100 on property taxes, almost 2,000 of that is going to the Manchester School District. So here's a, a property that's paying almost 1,000 less than a property in Coventry, but they're paying even more, and, and just about the same in property taxes to the schools. And then for New Franklin, that would be $403. And, you know, I, I looked at the Northwest Coventry, North and Manchester School Districts, and then I looked into people who live in Coventry with this one. And they, they all seem relatively close, but as far as the New Franklin's portion of that, we aren't the highest in the area. So there, there's some conversation, is how we're higher taxed, we're less services, that all builds into millage rate, and, you know, one of the things we pay for out there is not being a big city by the grime, and that's, that's what you get for it. So I just wanted to bring that up and discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, because we've discussed that, you know, that's come through years, where it's like, all that money, New Franklin's getting.
it's like, all that money, New Franklin's getting a small portion of it, so.
Yes, I mean, you know, be here, and I can't say I don't agree with that, we like our rural character, we like being who we are, and there's a cost for that, and that's the cost of it.
And I mean, it's just your school districts now.
Yeah, you want new schools, there's a cost, there's, it's, go be paid to be out there.
You know, Ken, that's really a good point, because most of us forget that. No matter what you have, just like they say, freedom is not free. It's the same with everything, and we make our community, but we also have to remember, we have to step up to the plate and pay for them. Now, it is your choice how you pay for it, but actually, we all have to pay for it.
And as far as the income tax goes, you know, if you don't work in the city of New Franklin, you're most likely paying 2% anyways, which stays with that community. So if you work in New Franklins, it's 2%, correct?
Yeah.
So then, if you work for the schools, or any local businesses, then you're paying a 2%, which comes to New Franklin, so. Well, we're not, I mean, we're taxed, kind of on par with a lot of the other communities, we're not higher than them.
I think our services are fantastic.
We've got good services.
Roads are always plowed, and we've got good police.
And all the police, and all the ambulance, I mean, those are the people you love to see, but we've had trouble, because you're joining those spots and you do the right thing.
If you're paying $400, $400, $500 a year, that ain't bad.
And that's what we forget, when you are paying for those services.
That's all, I just want to bring that up and just kind of address that, because, you know, there's a lot of people, they can, they can post stuff out there, but I just want to put some actual numbers to those comments.
And these are all available from the county auditor.
Yeah, this is all...
The county auditor is very helpful, you can get, you can get all the spreadsheets with the 73 different tax districts in Summit County, all this detail.
This is from the county side, actually, if you go to the county site, look at your parcel.
On the website.
Oh, it's there, yeah, if you go to the county, county website, you look up your parcel number, you click on it, and then you click on the previous year's taxes, because when you pay taxes this year, they're actually for last year, then down towards the bottom there's a little link you click on, it says, where does my money go? And that breaks it down as to where every penny goes.
The auditor will also give you a spreadsheet that's got all 72 in it, so you can do a comparison.
Usually, I get that every year, and what I, what I do, and the mayor's seen that, I basically take our school districts and, and make graphs on each one of them. We haven't put it on the website, because they're, well, you know, it's a little bit, a lot, a lot of room, but, but I actually do the graphs in color, so that, you know, you can tell the difference by seeing that piece of the pie, and have the numbers as well. So, I mean, if anybody would want that on, on the website, I can certainly do that. I do it every year to take...
There would be some good foundational, just some sort of a visual splash up there, just so when people do have concerns, and I'm paying, they associate us with the schools, or we're the schools, and all of them are paying taxes. And I think it would be good to give them a graphic as to what portion of that pie actually comes to New Franklin, and then all the services you get from that portion of that pie.
Thank you, Ken.
I have a little bit of new business.
If I can, go, we'll stay on this subject real quick. You bring up some great numbers and great points, and especially, you know, that our tax basis is pretty low, but we have a new fire engine. We have, we have a water line that's coming, we're working on sewers, we're working, you know, all these things, and every department, whether it's the mayor, whether it's fire department, whether it's police department, they go for those grants, they're constantly looking for grants, and that's how we're able to do so much in the city, because we have so many people that are, you know, putting a lot of time and effort into finding grants, so that we can do it, so we can put the water in without assessing any of the residents. So when we, if and when we put that sewer line down Vanderboek, you know, no assessments to the residents. As we look to do things up on 619, again, we'll be looking at doing it without doing assessments, and that's because of grants and all departments working hard to find these grants for the city and applying for them. And like the mayor said earlier today, there was a grant that came in yesterday for today, and it's due tomorrow, so, you know, jump on it and, you know, and put the information out there. So, so I, I think we're very fortunate with people that work in our city that help us do what we do and go for those grants.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I would venture to say there's not a grant that comes by, that if we're eligible for it, we don't try to apply for it.
We chase them off. Thanks for your information.
So my, my new business is that early voting begins, absentee voting begins on October 11th, and early voting, if you really want to be early, I used to always try to be the first one at the polls, 6:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, whatever, I can't be this early. October 12th, you can be at the Board of Elections at 8:00 AM, and I'll bet you there'll be a line, so, you know, the old joke is vote early and vote often, that's not really what you're supposed to do, but you can, you can vote early, and Summit County has got just basically every day from 8:00 to 5:00 for the rest of October, all the way up to even Saturday and Sunday before the election, November 3rd, I'm sorry, 4th, 5th. So election day is November 12th, so get involved, encourage people, it's not a presidential year, so a lot of times people don't think it matters, but, you know, we've got judges, council members, there's important stuff. Your tax money gets, gets dealt with here, and it's important to be involved, vote with it. Just doesn't get covered on Fox, do you?
You just got to that, make better. Anything else, Tom? Oh, we'd like to ask for an executive session to discuss future compensation with no decisions being made.
And that certainly makes sense. Do we say, uh, you know, yeah, public questions?
Any public questions or comments before we go into executive sessions?
What was the topic, Jim?
It's going to be for future compensation.
Compensation of public employees.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments?
Grab, make a motion to go and make a protest. Second?
I have a first and a second, though.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.